Tools and it sets forth guides for cities to start implementing that goal. With the purpose of providing housing for all, at all different income levels. How that's implemented on the local level. Traditionally, it has been through the adoption of a Lebanon or local comprehensive plan. Which looks at housing. Through that process, we establish goals and policies and action items to try to promote housing for all. In the staff report, I included a couple of key highlights of what some of those goals and policies are that sort of stipulate. The goal is to provide a variety of housing, provide housing to accommodate all different income levels. And for us to go through the process of looking at our codes and looking at our processes on a semi-regular basis. To identify if there's any new tools or concepts that we should keep up to date on. And so that's the comprehensive plan that tells us kind of where we want to go in terms of housing and the type of housing we want to provide. The housing needs analysis that we then commission is a look at our buildable land inventory to make sure that we have sufficient land. For the housing we need for our community. And then also identifies the breakdown of income levels, rental and homeownership that we should try to plan. And accommodate over a 20-year cycle. And then the housing production strategy is a new tool, but it all sort of leads together of it gives us the mechanism to do the work to say. We're going to look at our codes, we're going to look at our comp plan, we're going to look at our process and policies. Every cycle of about eight years. To make sure that we're keeping up to date on the housing concepts that we're making sure that our codes. Are dialed in to be able to provide as much housing as possible for all of the different income levels and types of housing available. So all of those tie together and then through the goal 10 for the statewide planning goal, which the whole result and the whole purpose of it is to. Build more housing. So that's why we're here. So last cycle, last work session, we focused on rental properties, we focused on rental concepts. This cycle, we're going to be focusing on ownership types and sort of the rest of what we're looking at. So I kind of just wanted to provide a reminder of what the owner's data is. So right now, the average housing price for a home in Lebanon is around $400,000. To be able to afford that, you need an income of $93,000 for a household. But based off of the census data for Lynn County and for the city of Lebanon, our average household income. For homeownership is $63,000. So what these numbers should sort of tell you is that we have housing available in the traditional single-family home type for the higher income levels within our community. And what our comp plan and housing needs analysis and now the housing production strategy goal would be is to. How do we start providing other housing options to provide more housing affordability in all the different types of housing? So that our residents here can afford and get into the homeownership market. So that is the goal. As a quick check of where we are in implementation of the housing needs analysis. The blue line is the need over the next 20-year cycle based off of income level for homeownership units. And the orange line is where we sit today in terms of housing construction for homeownership housing. And so we've made some progress, but it's clear we still have a ways to go. We do have quite a few projects that are in the pipeline for subdivisions. But it doesn't get us to the numbers that we need. And it doesn't necessarily address those numbers for trying to get people into starter homes to be able to have lower income. Entry-level housing to get people into the homeownership field. And so the policies that we've taken and created through the consultants are to try to address. Providing additional housing opportunities that are for sale housing to the lower or middle or upper range of housing that we need in Lebanon. So with that background. We can move on to the land use strategies. First, I kind of wanted to go over what we have now. So what we have now in terms of housing types are pretty traditional, you have the single-family home. The duplex, traditional manufactured dwellings, multifamily apartments and accessory dwelling units. To provide different tools and different mechanisms to create affordability, which was the goal of the comprehensive plan in 2004. And the tools that were implemented in 2008 when we created the development code to try to create those different affordability levels. Were to provide opportunities for manufactured home parks. To create opportunities for townhomes, which are attached, single-family homes that can be sold separately, but you have neighbors. That share walls. To provide cottage clusters, which are to have little single-family home dwellings, but they're all on the same lot and they share common open space and parking areas. Zero lot line housing development, which allows for properties with smaller lots, so 3,500 square feet. But one side yard is a zero side yard, so it can be shared for additional access and space for your neighbor and it builds along that way. Lot averaging, which allows for subdivisions to have a mix of traditional, single-family lots of 5,000 square feet. And then you can have some that are less, but you have to counterbalance that with an equal amount or more that have a larger lots to counterbalance that. The traditional density bonus, which is meant for affordable housing. That is mostly for subsidized-type housing, but has been attempted to be used for traditional apartments as well. And then our infill design standards, which is just for the smaller one lot size or less to try to create a level of neighborhood compatibility. And as you can see that I've put on the slide, two of them require modification to meet state law and the rest of them are rarely used. If ever, since we've adopted them. Which means that our attempts through our goal, through our comp plan and the housing needs analysis to provide housing for the different income levels. Our latest attempt from our code in 2008 has not been excessively effective. And so through the housing production strategy, we have the ability to recalibrate some of these tools. And create new tools to try to achieve that that goal of different housing for the different level of incomes. Questions so far?
No.
Okay.
I don't have any.
You were looking like you were going up to the microphone, so I just wanted to provide the opportunity.
I'll wait and see what other people say.
Okay. So with that understanding of our current code, how it's worked. We also did a process through the start of this where we had stakeholder conversations. And one of the focus groups was with developers. And a number of the comments that were made with the developers was a lot of the tools that we have don't work or they don't fit what the market actually does and so they just don't use them. And so this provides us the opportunity to do some calibration to actually have a tool that they'll use. So what's proposed out of the land use regulatory options. Are to simplify our infill standards that's needed to comply with state law. And it's also quite a cumbersome process at the staff and developer level. And so it would be helpful to be able to simplify those just to make our lives a little bit easier and to make it more clear. But then to also meet the state law requirements of having clear concise language. The second one that would comply, what would be a state law compliance is manufactured, allowing manufactured housing and park standards. Right now, our code does not currently comply with the state requirements that have been updated over the last several cycles. And so it would be a good opportunity to put this as part of the housing production strategy as something that we're going to do. Because it's something that we legally should be doing anyway. And then the next four are, I put them under the category of code calibration because these are items that already exist within our development code. But they just haven't been utilized, so let's take the opportunity to reinvent them and recalibrate them to be more useful. And so that would be restructuring the density bonus, recalibrating cottage cluster housing standards. Consider revising the multifamily standards or providing more flexibility for housing within the commercial zones. And then the final bit or the actual new concepts that have not been adopted before in our code. Which would be to allow tiny homes on wheels. And then also create the small lot, single-family home concept where you can have detached, single-family homes. But on smaller lots, it can be as small as 2,500 square feet if we so chose. I highlighted three of them in blue, those are the opportunities to either create something new that the community has specifically asked for. Which is tiny homes on wheels or provide that opportunity for more for-sale type housing development as well. So what I'll be doing is going through those three first and then we can go through the rest of them after that. So good, good so far?
Yep.
Okay. So for the cottage cluster, again, it is a number of single-family detached dwellings on a single lot. The benefit of this is that they're sharing the open space. So it can be a communal area that has a smaller square footage requirement for the lot to work. And then it would also be to accommodate the smaller, single-family home type. These are generally around, I'd say 700 to 1,200 square feet max. And so they're meant to be more starter homes, they're meant to be more for seniors. Or people that are, you know, kind of like me, I don't want to maintain a yard. So this would be a perfect option for that type of dwelling as well.
Is there a garage involved in here?
They can, there are some concepts that do provide personal garages, there are also some concepts that provide just an open parking lot like you would see in a multifamily home.
Just trying to see if there was a parking lot there.
Yeah, I can, there's, after this slide, we have a couple of examples. That was one thing that we heard from the original work session is that you guys wanted to see samples of how these are implemented. In communities of our size or less, and so we did put that together. But generally speaking, this would provide the opportunity to provide for-sale type dwelling units. Of a smaller size as more entry-level homes at a lower cost. And that would be the benefit to try to hit that target of between 80 to 120 area median income.
So this type of. Housing would have just a shared open space?
It can, it's not limited to just a shared open space.
So I guess my, I guess my question would be this. Will they each have their own tax lot or is it one shared tax lot, is there, do they have to have an HOA for this type of?
So yeah, traditionally for cottage clusters, it is a single tax lot that you would then file what's called a condominium map over it. So you can sell each of the individual buildings separately, but it's a communal tax lot with communal services. That's traditionally how you could do it for sale. These can also be developed as a, you know, apartment, not the right word, but a rental type development as well. But there is the opportunity for it to be created as a for-sale.
And where have they tried this in Oregon? I know there's a place up by, by. Off the Columbia. It's up on the hill, I used to go out in that area and I remember hearing the name of the city, but I can't think of it right now. Yeah, White Salmon, thank you.
Yeah.
It was right by. Anyhow. But is that, do they have an HOA?
You would have an HOA or you would have a property manager to take care of the communal areas while still letting them have the individual for sale.
Okay.
Yeah. So these are a couple of examples that are local. This is in White Salmon, Washington, you have a sample plan that sort of shows for this concept. Every, some of them had their own individual driveways and garages, some of them had the communal parking. I don't have a pointer, so I can't really point to it, but you can see it on the plan hopefully. But there's a mix and match of what can be provided. Kind of see what the community looks like, which it really has a feel and look of a single-family neighborhood or just a little cottage area. Again, for Ashland, you could see this one is, I would say this is more of a traditional layout of a cottage cluster. Where you have, everybody has their own individual lot, everybody has their own individual home, you have some private open space, but then you have the communal courtyard. With the onsite parking that's separate as its own individual lot. And again, that's in Ashland. And then this is in Monmouth. It's again, the small, single-family home, this one actually almost looks like a traditional size based off of it's a two-story. And then it has communal areas and a lot of the times you also have like communal. Open spaces or a community room or something like that. And it would just depend on how you would like to implement the code and the types of amenities you'd like to provide. So.
Kelly, has there been interest from developers? Have they ever approached you about interest in this type of thing or in Oregon? Are there developers that are wanting to do this and they've been held back because of our zoning?
So you have three examples from Oregon here and one from Washington that shows that developers are doing them and they're all recent developments. Our code currently limits it to a maximum of four dwellings on a lot, no matter the size of the lot. It could be an acre, it could be two acres, but to do the cluster cottage concept, you're limited to four. So the code calibration would be, we already allow it in our code, but the reason why a lot of developers aren't doing it is because. We have a lot of lots that are larger and it doesn't pencil out to do it. And so this would sort of change it to where you would do it based off of a density number or a square footage number of, you can have X amount of. Units per square footage of the property. And then it would set the standards of how we would want it to look beyond that. And so right now, it just doesn't pencil because it's limited to that, that hard number of four dwelling units per lot maximum. And so I think if you do the code calibration, you're going to have this option as a greater opportunity. That developers might take advantage of, because again, you have three examples from local cities within Oregon and one from Washington.
Kelly, am I correct in understanding that after 25,000, once we hit that 25,000 population piece, that we would have to allow things like this in our. As part of House Bill 2001, am I right on that or wrong?
Yes, so I don't want to get too far into the weeds on that, but as part of House Bill 2001 right now. We're a city of over 10,000, but a city under 25, which means that we have the duplex rule. So everywhere where we allow a single-family home, we also have to allow for a duplex. Once we hit the population of 25,000 or more, we fall under the more density requirement. Where you would require anywhere where you allow for a single-family home, you also have to require, are required to allow duplexes, triplexes and quad units. In the same manner. And so that's hopefully a ways away as we're growing. But this type of housing opportunity provides a tool to provide affordability of unit. While meeting a density standard that Lebanon can choose of how we want to apply it. Eventually, we will have to apply different standards as we grow and as we gain in population though.
Okay, thank you.
Is it safe to say that this is, this, no matter who we get, it could be rental or it could be purchased, no matter how we develop this?
Yes. Yeah. Okay. Other questions on this one? So then the next concept is the small lot, single-family homes. I want to stipulate that our current code allows for a traditional, single-family home on a 5,000 square foot lot or more. We're not planning on changing that. That is going to stay the same unless the city council chooses otherwise. This is a concept that would be an added tool in the tool chest, like we had on the other slide where it talked about the lot averaging and all that kind of stuff. This is going to be an added tool in the tool chest if the city council chooses. Where we would allow for smaller lot sizes, it could be anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 square foot lot. And then allow for a single-family home to be built on that. So you'll have the traditional setbacks of a five-foot setback, you'll have a detached home. You'll be able to have your own feel of a traditional, single-family neighborhood, you'll just have a smaller lot to do it on. This would allow for more affordability, which we'll get through later. We have some data that our developers have put together in terms of the cost of construction. And anticipated sales price reductions associated with it. But this again, the goal is to provide more of a middle to the 120 range. Area median income house unit, which is currently not affordable. Again, think back to that slide that we had where currently a home price, a home sales price is around 400,000. You would need a 93,000 a year income for your family to afford it. The goal is to try to provide affordability for single-family homes at a lesser price to be able to make them affordable for the community that we have. So these are some examples, again, all in Oregon of how they're developed. And the size of the lots that they're on, as you can see, they are smaller lots, which equates to. Realistically, a smaller backyard and smaller square footage of a home. But they look and feel very traditional, single-family home neighborhood. As you can see, some of them allow for a two-car garage, I would say that that would probably be unique. Most of them would be a single-car garage, which you see most of them as examples here. Again, in Newport, you have different styles and different sizes of lots themselves. But again, they all have that traditional, single-family home feel. So in terms of examples of cost breakdown. As the developers have put it together, and I will say, I'm not the one that put these numbers together. I'm not that good at this kind of stuff, so I'm going to rely on their numbers. But based off of their understanding of construction costs, if all things are created equal. Really where the cost savings comes for the developers is you have the same size lot, you're equating to construction of more units. So you have the ability to lower the price because the overall construction cost is going to be less based off of the number of units. So in this example here, you're ending up with instead of a traditional, maybe 2,200 square foot home, which is mostly what's being developed right now. And you would be creating more of a 1,500 to 1,600 square foot home with the smaller lots subdivisions. And you're increasing the number of dwelling units that are being created, which gives us the opportunity to provide more housing for our community. For actual developer costs. We had the comment that it's more, it costs more to develop a smaller, single-family home than the traditional, single-family home. Again, I can't really speak to that, but the consultants have put together this concept of anticipated cost per unit. In this system and the amount of profit that they would achieve. Frankly, we don't care about their profit, but this is just a tool to identify that these types of projects can pencil out. Ultimately, what this does is it provides the greater opportunity for single-family homes for the middle income. Or even hopefully a starter home for some families. And so that's where we sit on those. The other thing about this tool that I would say is probably helpful for our community. We have a lot of land in the south side of our city that's open and ready for development, but it's impacted with site constraints such as wetlands. By allowing for smaller lot subdivision, you're going to be able to yield more units within the area while building around the site constraints. Which could then yield the ability to have those properties pencil out. Whereas if we have the larger, single-family homes, projects might not necessarily pencil out because you have to mitigate wetlands. Or you're buying land that you can't build on. And so these smaller lots create the opportunity to create a higher density while still having that traditional, single-family home feel. And making those lots actually buildable at that point. So that's, that helps Lebanon specific that this tool would be available for. So for both the cottage cluster and the single-family lots. There are ways for us to ensure that we create the neighborhood feel that we're looking for. While also allowing for this increased density in this type of housing. For cottage clusters, there's luckily a tool for us that's already been created through the Department of Land Conservation Development. We can start with that and then make it Lebanon-specific. But what we can do to make sure that these units are still targeted to the income levels that we're hoping to achieve. Is to put limits on the square footage of the home that can be built on them. So instead of just making it, well, you can do this concept and we don't care about the size of the home. That opens it up to if the lots, the lots large enough, you can still have 2,200 square foot homes that are then of the higher price and you're not achieving the goal of the tool. So by putting in like, for example, a square footage limit, it's just an example, I'm not saying that's the exact tool we'll use, but that's an example. We can make sure that it's being designed to meet the purpose. And for the single lot lot, the small lots, single-family home concepts. That's again, we have tools that we have in our tool belt such as a floor area ratio. Where we say you can build, you know, for every one square foot of building area, you have to have three square feet of open space. So that it limits the amount of building size that you can have. And what that does is make sure that again, you're targeting the purpose of the tool, which is to create that housing affordability. I don't want to get stuck on what those tools might be because we haven't done. The full analysis of how to implement it for the code considerations that Lebanon wants. But these are examples of what we can implement to maintain that that goal of what the tool is. And then start planning for what Lebanon wants to see for our communities as well. Any questions so far?
Actually, I do have one, are you going to speak on the commercial aspects of this? Okay, I'll wait then.
Okay.
On the smaller lot, single-family, so the way I'm understanding is we still have single-family zoning that is a 5,000 square foot lot minimum.
Absolutely.
And we have an additional. Zoning that would be small lot, single-family.
Yes.
That allows, that allows the 2,500 square foot lot.
Precisely.
That just dictate by the setback, how big the house can be, is that the goal?
So you can dictate it by setbacks, you can dictate it by that tool of the floor area ratio, you can dictate it by you can only be two stories with no basement. So you start limiting the footprint in which the building can be located in and how tall it can be, there's a lot of different tools that can be used. To start dictating the size of the dwelling to try to get that affordability level. But there's also the tools that you can use to make sure that we're maintaining that feel of that single-family neighborhood.
If we talk to enough developers of this that we know what's stopping them from, other than the size. I mean, I do care what their profit is because if they don't make profit, they're not going to bring them here.
Right.
And to some level.
Yeah.
But it's kind of a balancing act because we want it to be a cheap enough house that somebody can live in, but the people have to make money or they're not going to come here and do it. So is something, anything stopping them from doing that now, other than just how many units they can put in an acre?
Well, yeah, so that's where I kind of put the slide together that gave the example, these are our current tools that we have. We do have opportunities in our current code that allows for smaller lots for single-family homes. But it's limited to this concept of the zero lot line development, right? Where it's, you're starting to have to create easements over. Where it's, you're starting to have to create easements over other people's properties for maintenance purposes, and it creates this kind of convoluted tool that developers have to put in place. And then you have to make sure that property owners have a good understanding of how that works and everything is is coded right. And so they just don't like to do it. But they would love to be able to build something on smaller lots so that they can build a greater yield. And and they would do it if we had the right tool. And there's a couple of examples that we gave from all these other cities in Oregon that they they clearly are doing it. We just don't have that that tool and that capacity of a tool that works for developers right now to do it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? So the next one is the new housing concept of tiny homes on wheels. I bring this one up because I I get a number of calls a year requesting from homeowners to either do a tiny home as an accessory dwelling unit on their existing, single-family home property. Or we've had a number of property owners that have been interested in doing the concept of tiny home villages, where it's a single lot and you get to park your tiny homes on it, kind of like a manufactured home lot, but specifically for the tiny home concept. And so we we bring it up because there's been that interest in the community. And it's also a tool that would provide that for that low-income housing opportunity. It's it's largely going to be a rental concept for the accessory dwelling unit style. But there are the homeownership concept opportunities for the the tiny home on wheels villages type of thing.
And has this been implemented anywhere?
Yep.
Okay, it looks like you're about to flip the slide. Okay.
I am. So again, i- in Waldport, it has been implemented. It it's a combination of of how they're being used. But that's, this is kind of a low-impact, low-improvement-style concepts. You also have Cottage Grove that has built a tiny home village. This isn't necessarily tiny homes on wheels, or not all of them are, but they are that extremely small size of about far less than 500 square feet. I think they're averaging around 380.
The tiny homes on wheels, what kind of infrastructure needs to be in place for those? Will be required to be in place? Or do you haul them off like a mobile home or RV and dump your gray water and your, all that kind of stuff?
We would set that policy.
I'm asking.
Yeah. We would set that policy of
Well, these examples that we've got here, with the ones on wheels.
Yeah. I I will be honest with you, I did not do the research of how they they took care of those things. We just did the research of, do these concepts exist? And if you like the concept, then we start talking about, do we want to make sure that we have infrastructure for sewage and that kind of stuff? And I would say it would be staff's recommendation that you do have that infrastructure, especially if you're doing, especially if you're doing ADUs, because once you get it back there, I'm not quite sure how you're getting it out.
I don't think you would.
And then if you are doing it as a village, you can do it as either every one of them has to have their own intake connection or you can have a communal dump station that they would then move it around.
I just wonder why they, if you have to have the infrastructure there, which in my mind you would, why have it on wheels? Why not just put it down?
So so can I, can I interject? I've I've seen several places in a lot of of communities, the, you do have the sewer and water hookups. Very similar, you have in in like at Gil's Landing for RVs. So you pull in, the, there are a wide variety of people who are choosing to live in tiny homes. Some of them know Maddy, and they're kind of going campground to campground to campground. But there are people who may go and live someplace for six months and then go to another place for six months. That was one of the things that came out of pandemic with traveling nurses. There were a lot of traveling nurses living in tiny homes as they would go from community to community, but they might be there for six to nine months at a time. And and so the places that I have seen where they are doing them on wheels would have a sewer and a water hookup. Some of them will have cable and Wi-Fi hookups, similar to to an RV park. Not unusual.
We call those snowbirds here.
I think too.
Yes, I will say it's it's not that different than like, you know, the Rio Grande Valley in in Texas, right? The snowbirds that go there with with RVs and live there for four or five months in the winter.
All of ours are in Yuma right now, in snowstorms.
So our challenge would kind of be how much we want it to be an RV park and how much we want and how we code it to control that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see, I've I I have been a proponent of the idea of a a tiny home village kind of setup, but on foundation.
Right.
Not something that you can hook up in the middle of the night and leave.
And and that would be an equivalency of of a cottage cluster as well. So I would say that the the home that the is displayed right now, those are on foundations. I would say at that point, you're almost no different than doing a cottage cluster concept.
You actually are because of the cost.
Yes, and you're creating much smaller units.
That would open up that low-income opportunities.
Correct, yeah.
You know, these tiny homes, like the ones that are shown here, they have internally, because I I've never been in one. Do internally have laundry services or is there like a community laundry site or?
So usually
Those type of services?
So usually tiny homes on wheels, they'll either or, it's it's kind of like an RV, it's either or. For these types of facilities, the the co-op that was created here, you have community buildings, which means they probably have laundry services on site. And so you don't necessarily need to take up that space within the incredibly small square footage that's being provided. It's a community space that's being provided in this example.
So they would rent the space or would they own the space for both situations, the ones on wheels and the permanent-looking ones?
I would think the ones on wheels, you would have the person own the tiny home on wheels, and it would be very similar to like an RV park.
RV park, okay.
For these, this one is is identified as a rental income, and this project specifically is is income-restricted. And so you have to make sure that people of an affordability range of 50% area median income or below are renting these facilities.
A lot of these have the small stack laundry units inside.
Yeah. So again, that's an option. And then you have the tiny homes as accessory dwelling units. These, again, we're going to have to work through the code to to, you know, take care of Lebanon's specific needs. We want to make sure that there's a clear distinction between perhaps a tiny home versus a recreational vehicle and how we would do that. But this would provide the opportunity for people to create a different type of accessory dwelling unit that's not necessarily permanent on their property, where they might be able to bring in something for a mother-in-law unit, and then when you're tired of them, move them out. And you don't have a permanent impact on your property. And so it's just an additional tool that's available. There are several different codes that we can steal from of other people doing this. The consultants found an example that they'd love for us to look at. But again, it's just that that option that that provides almost an immediate construction need on a home and 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 just another tool. So. That good so far?
Yep.
So those are the three concepts that that we promised that we would talk about, that that focus on single-family homes or or new housing concepts specifically. Review of those that are under the state compliance and then the rest of the tools that we kind of covered already. So this one is truly just for for simplifying infill design standards. Right now, we have a weird table, which is is fun to try to interpret, that has different metrics, that have different rules, that have compatibility requirements of you need to design something that's going to be consistent with the neighborhood. And I I think sometimes that's good, and sometimes if you're trying to uplift a neighborhood, that's not the easiest tool to try to implement. But most importantly, we have a requirement from the state that anything that we apply for needed housing is clear and concise language and and is not open to interpretation. Infill design standards leave a lot of things open to interpretation. And so it would be the goal to clean up this requirement to meet the intent of state law. So this is another one of those tools that you can easily check off to say, yes, we're going to do it because we should do it anyway. And then it also helps in clarity of expectation at the staff level and at the developer level. So this one's, if you're looking for staff's direction, this would be one that would be really easy to to move forward with. This is also one that would be really easy to move forward with, and it's a pretty quick and easy change of our code. We have a requirement that for the state law, you have to allow for manufactured home parks by rights within certain zones. Our code is kind of old and outdated, and it doesn't allow it by right, and so it's a pretty quick code change that would meet state law and also have something that you can check off on the housing production strategy. Any questions on code compliance options? No? Okay. Next up is again the code calibration concepts. These are again, tools that we already have in our toolbox but aren't necessarily working, so let's work on them. For the density bonus, this one is, again, weird and a little convoluted and not really applicable. And it doesn't result in a significant increase of affordable units. The concept of a density bonus is if you provide income-restricted, so you are saying that these units will only be rented to people of a certain income or less for a period of time of anywhere from 15 to 50 to 100 years, depending on what the agreement is, then we'll let you build to a higher density to be able to offset the costs of making that income-restricted. It's a great tool that is universally applied across the United States and several places in Oregon have different ways in which it's applied. Right now, the way that the code is drafted, it does not allow anything other than an increase in density. You still have to meet parking requirements, you still have to meet setback requirements, you meet all of the regular development standards. But if your site can accommodate increased density, you can do that if you provide more affordable units. And and so the suggestion would be to recalibrate this to make it useful and to allow for greater flexibility within our development standards if you are providing that income-restricted units to create that that affordability for the extremely low-income household type. So that would just be our recommendation to to move forward with that. It's a good tool, it's just a tool that nobody uses, even those that have built low-income housing recently haven't used it because it's just not worth it. It doesn't do anything for them. So the next one is housing in commercial zones. Right now, we allow for residential dwellings as long as it is the second floor above a commercial use. The only place that has really implemented this is a few units in downtown. And there's some other opportunities that that we can sort of look at our commercial areas and say, are there other opportunities to create more housing without totally detracting from the the commercial use? We are in the process of formalizing and completing our economic opportunity analysis. As part of that analysis, we did a buildable land inventory, and there is hundreds of acres of excess mixed-use and commercial lands. And so us allowing for additional residential opportunity in the commercial zones will not detract from the commercial availability of of land for us to accommodate our growth within our community. That being said, we would want to be careful of how we apply this, where we apply it, and the standards that we apply. There's a couple different ways that we can do this. I would say it's, the whole point would be to not just simply make it a requirement that it has to be above commercial, which is considered a vertical mixed-use. You can look at options to do what's called horizontal mixed-use, so you have the commercial property in the front, and then in the back, you can have some residential development. You can also look at some areas in the city where commercial usage is just not really viable. You've had a couple of vacant properties sitting vacant for quite some time, which means that there's not really any commercial viability to it. I like to call those areas as as mid-block, and so they're not next to any major intersections, they're kind of hard to get into. Those might be good opportunities to allow for peer residential on the street. Those are concepts. Again, it's if this is something that council wants to consider as a policy, our next step would be to, I would suggest getting what's called a transportation growth management grant, which would be issued by the state, which would allow us to study the the highway, where the best opportunities are and the safest opportunities to provide housing and develop a whole system around it. So. No, you have questions about this.
Well, I was just going to ask, what wasn't the biggest complaint from the community on on some of this? What a, well, I'll, I guess I'll answer my own question. Some of the stuff I've read from the Planning Commission minutes, they they talk about a change of their their neighborhoods from low-density to high-density. Is that, is that what you hear from the community? Is that concern mostly, or?
Regularly, what we experience from the community is general change, but then very specifically, high-density change within their their traditional neighborhood area.
Well, like I said, I read that in the minutes, and it made me think that that, then I read the 300-plus acres, I think it is, of commercial property. Is that, that map right there, does that show the full 300? I doubt it, but.
No, that that, so the 300 acres is is a mix of mixed-use land and highway commercial and the central business downtown commercial. This just simply shows the highway and and the central business zone. It doesn't show the full breadth of of the mixed-use areas.
I guess what I'm, what I was going to get at is that we have the commercial land that really hasn't been either developed or it's it doesn't have neighborhoods in it, okay? So the biggest concern from the community is changing the density of their their neighborhoods. It was one after another in the minutes from the Planning Commission meetings. Would, is there, is there anything that would prevent us from encouraging some of these different building models, like the cottage homes and the tiny homes and and those type of, I'll call them facilities, in those type of properties and not allow them to be built in existing neighborhoods? Are we allowed to do that, or is the state come down and say, no, you can't do that?
So.
That is, you understand my question? Okay.
You have built-out neighborhoods, you have neighborhoods that are are subject for redevelopment as older homes are are no longer viable and need to be rebuilt. And you have neighborhoods that still have land to be developed. Our zoning system has three basic residential zones. You have the low-density residential zone, the high-density residential zone, and the mixed-density residential zone. The low-density and the high-density zones are generally largely built out. But you do have a large swath, I think almost 65% of all of our housing area is zoned residential mixed-use right now. Don't quote me on that number.
Okay.
And and that's the one that allows for, depending on the lot size, depending on all of the different zoning characteristics, that allows for any mix of single-family home all the way up to multifamily apartments. And and so you could, for some of these tools, say, we don't want to allow them in low-density or high-density zones, which would take care of the the major existing established residential neighborhoods. But then a lot, you have, consider allowing it in the the residential mixed-density zone and the mixed-use zones. The only other option, which will be a heavy undertaking, is if you really wanted to evaluate the city as a whole and start creating additional zoning areas, which will be an incredibly heavy lift. And I would imagine quite contentious, depending on which person ends up in which different zone. And that would have to be a different discussion.
Okay.
Is that the same as if, if, I'm not a zoning expert, as you know, I'm sure, but can you just take a piece of commercial zone and change it?
You absolutely can go through a process of changing land use and changing zones. Private property owners can do that, and the city can do that. It's a process, and with every process, you want to think through it of what's our goals, what's our policies, what we're trying to achieve. And and it's, it's a process.
Is it as big a process as adding in more zones that aren't even defined yet?
No.
Okay. Want to make sure.
But that all just should be thought through. I am running out of time, so I'm going to speed through some of the rest of this. Multifamily stuff, we have already talked about this at the last session. We really just need a yes or no if you want to move forward with it. Some key things is some new information for you to consider. I did a call around to 11 different apartment complexes in the city, both old and new. And our average occupancy rate of the apartment complexes, as we said today, is for the 11 that I've I've surveyed, we're at 96% occupancy. for the eleven that I've surveyed, we're at ninety-six percent occupancy. In two thousand and nineteen, when we did our housing needs analysis, before we had our big construction boom of the apartment complexes in town, we were at ninety-six percent occupancy. So we have more people living in apartments, but they're still full. In the exchange, we have had a significant reduction in our severe rent burn status of ten-point-five percent, which is the highest reduction rate in the entire state for those that are severely rent burned, which means that Lebanon is doing its job, so congrats to that. Beyond that, though, a way that you can look at this, not making a recommendation, but a way you can look at it is, we have built an exorbitant amount of apartment complexes very quickly, we've made improvements to our severe rent burn status, and so maybe you don't need to change anything, and we'll see what happens in eight years. You can put this one on the back burner. You don't have to touch parking, you don't have to touch density, you don't have to touch open space, you can just say, we're already accomplishing this one, you don't need to do this one. So you do have options, you do have choices, and this one could be one of those that you say we don't want to touch right now. We're always gonna have to come back in eight years to do this again. So those are the eight housing concepts. I have talked quickly, and I have talked a lot, and we've asked some questions. I think I can go through the timeline really quick as a concept. The one thing that I want to stress is, we don't need to do all of this all at once and immediately. This is something that we can take our time to implement, we can put up a strategy, and one that I've put forward in the staff report is, take care of the things in which the people are actively asking for and the state code requirements in the first bit, take care of the code, you know, calibrations in the next bit, and then implement the new concepts in the last bit, so it gives us time to think about each one. That's a concept, it is up to, we can put forth a staff recommendation and council can consider it, but this is an eight-year process, it's not gonna happen overnight. It will give us the time to look at what other cities are doing, and it will give us the time to really think about how we want to make Lebanon specific codes to implement it. But these eight options are the ones that we've gone through, these are the ones that are currently on the table in terms of land use regulatory options. At the next work session that we're gonna schedule, we will be discussing financial contribution options as strategies. The more that we do on the land use side, the more flexibility we have on the financial side. And so I've tried to lay it out as easy as I can in terms of how these different, how these would work, and with that, I would again ask that the council request is to provide us direction on which one of these you would like to move forward with, and hopefully we can start moving forward on putting together the document for consideration.
I don't see any reason not to move forward with all, we still have, they're still abstract, we can still change them to our needs, right? I think there's pieces of them, there's pieces of them that probably some people don't like, but there's something good in all of them, and we might as well, we might as well try.
Okay.
The only piece I really don't like is the apartment part, and that's just because if we're at ninety-six percent, and we were ninety-six percent in two thousand and eighteen, clearly the market's regulating that on their own, and they're gonna, builders are continuing to continue to build. I don't know that we need to incentivize that anymore if we are still getting a ton of apartment complexes being built. So it just seems like they're doing, the market is taking care of that on its own, right?
I missed some, which part of this incentivizes apartments?
The revised multifamily apartment standards.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Yeah, we talked about cutting down parking requirements.
Correct.
Last month, and I think Michelle's saying, we don't necessarily need to do that because there's...
They're still coming in.
They're still coming in.
Great, good. Check.
Yeah, but I like, I like all, I mean, obviously, we kind of have to do the two, there's state law compliance, and I think simplifying the infill design standards, anytime we can make it easier for you guys and easier for the developer, I'm all for it. And then I like the idea of the cottage cluster, I think, to have that as a option here in Lebanon. I think the sooner we can make that available to developers, the better it would be for people in the town. Anything that we can make it, you know, easier to get single-family houses built and make it attractive for developers to come to Lebanon and do that type of project, I think we should put on the fast track.
I echo that, and also for the new small lot, single-family detached standards, looking at what that could look like for us, and knowing that there are a lot of different limits and policy pieces that I would want to put on that, because I don't think we want acres and acres of these, you know, small lots, but like in pocket forms or something like that. But again, those are for discussions for later, so. Kelly, you did an amazing job, thank you so much for walking us through this. It was so much more clear, and I just appreciate all the work that you clearly put into this. I feel, at least I know, I feel that I'm more, I understand this a lot more than I did, what, a couple of weeks ago, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Is there any other comments? I would just say that I agree with what the councilor said. I don't think there is any need for apartment modifications, I think they're going up just fine. The, of course, as Jeremy stated, the state law compliance, we need to do those. So, yeah, anyhow, is there any other comments?
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
You all have made me very happy.
Work session is now adjourned.
Call to order the meeting. Let's rise for the flag salute.
Legislations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Recorder, please read the role.
Counselor Steinhebel.
Here.
Counselor Dykstra.
Here.
Counselor Mann.
Present.
Counselor Salvage.
Here.
Counselor Ofers.
Here.
And Counselor Workman.
Here.
The following consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items unless a counselor so request. In this case, the items will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. The following Lebanon City Council Agenda, March 8th, 2023. Lebanon Advisory Committee, October 11th, 2022. Parks Trees Trails Advisory Committee, October 19th, 2022. Planning Commission, November 16th and December 21st, 2022. February 8th, 2023 Work Session and Regular Session. And Marlins Wine Wholesale Malt Beverage and Wine New Outlet Liquor License. Is there a motion?
I move.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Workman and second by Steinhebel.
Good job.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. We'll go on to the presentations. We have a presentation by the Lebanon Fire District on their annual report and an update on Oak Street Station Replacement. Chief Redondi. I hope I said that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Is this working? Perfect. You can hear me?
Little red light on?
A little red light's on.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager, Staff, thank you so much for the opportunity to come meet with you today. The partnership has been phenomenal. I was fortunate enough to be invited last year and do a presentation for you. So for some of you, this will be an update to last year's presentation. For the new members, this will be an opportunity to share with you a little bit about your fire district. We are the same but different, and hopefully I'll demystify a little bit about fire districts for you. So I hope to go over today who the Lebanon Fire District is, what we do, the value we add to the community, the challenges we face in public safety that you're more familiar with than you realize with dealing with the Police Department and their challenges, and then what we're doing to look to the future. So the Lebanon Fire District has been long established, started in 1884. We had left the city and became a district in 1986. Please don't ask me why. I'm going to assume a lot of it has to do with budgeting and the ability to fund a fire district or a fire department. And many times districts were pulled out and created in their own entities to be able to have their own taxing opportunities. Your fire district has forty-two career folks and sixty-one volunteer responders staffed out of five stations. Two of them are staffed twenty-four seven, three sixty-five with career. Volunteer firefighters respond to all five of those stations. The important thing that I want to share with you is we just don't protect the city Lebanon proper. We have a hundred and thirty-four square miles of fire protection district, which includes a lot of unincorporated Le- or Lynn County. We also have over four hundred square miles of ambulance service area. We provide ambulance service to Brownsville and to Sio and Crabtree. We are one of three ambulance service providers, Albany being the other and Sweet Home being the other in Lynn County. So what's the big deal? What's the difference between a fire department and a fire district? A fire district, and you will hear me get on my soapbox a little bit, fire districts are our own form of local government. We are framed out under Oregon ORS rules. We have to have a balanced budget like any other state agency. We have to be audited and so forth. We have our own Board of Directors, which is functions much like the City Council. They provide me guidance. They're my bosses as far as a policy and direction. A department, much like the Police Department, is folded under a city under overall services umbrellas and funded by basically a allotted portion of city budget. So what is a district? We are one of two hundred and sixty-seven fire districts in Oregon. What we are not is part of the state, part of the city, or part of a county government. Our primary funding source is property tax revenue for the Lebanon Fire District. That's two hundred or two dollars and twenty-six cents per thousand of appraised value. We do have an enterprise fund. Our ambulance, the purpose of an enterprise fund is to try to have that service delivery run like a business. So hopefully it's a net zero at the end with cost versus revenues. The other property, the other revenue opportunities besides grants are bonds and levies. And we recently passed a bond in two, or 2019, for sixteen million dollars to build a new fire station and buy some apparatus, which we'll share with you towards the end. So like many other fire departments and fire districts around the county, EMS takes up the lion's share of our response. Primary EMS is seventy percent, which is pretty standard across the country. Two percent, you say, well, fires only run two percent. That's true. But what I will share with you, working for over thirty-five years in the fire service in two different states for three different fire departments, we burn a lot in our district. There's a lot of fires in our district on a weekly basis. Some big, some small. Most of them are multi-alarms primarily because of lack of water supply in the rural communities and the ability to have to bring our own water. Last year, we ran almost seven thousand calls, which is pretty consistent. The year before that, we ran a little bit over that. But on average, we average about eighteen or nineteen calls a shift. So in perspective, my last department I worked for was a department of about a hundred and thirty people. My daily staffing level was the total size of the department I represent now. And out of ten stations and a hundred square, a hundred and sixty square miles, we ran an average of about thirty-five calls a day. Our folks are very, very busy for the handful of career and volunteer folks we have. So what do we add? What value do we bring to the communities? And I will share with you like I shared last time, if I'm going to die, I'd like to die here because our return on spontaneous circulation is phenomenal. Now, it has dropped four points in the last two years. But if you suffer a cardiac arrest in our community, your chances of survival are very high compared to the national average. And so that's something we are proud of and the community should be proud of. As far as mutual aid, we cannot do it alone. No fire department, no district can staff their organization for the big one, right? So we have reciprocity and mutual aid agreements with our communities. We gave mutual aid to over two hundred times last year and received it a hundred and five times. Though that has been a challenge, right, as we look towards volunteerism and the decline of volunteerism. When I started as Fire Chief in 2019 and we had mutual aid requests and I pulled into the station, I had fire engines and water tenders and chief officers lined up on my apparatus bay. Three years later, that same call, it's become more of a challenge for fire districts in our area to support mutual aid, especially volunteer departments. It's becoming more of a challenge, which it should be a concern for everyone. We do respond to conflagrations inside and outside the state is part of the wildland and larger mutual aid. And the important thing is while we do have a lot of fires, we've saved over four million dollars of property last year. So what are the challenges we face as a district? And here's where I get, I will get on my soapbox. Fire districts and districts in general, there's over three thousand districts across the country. And we are not well identified or defined under the federal code of regulations when it comes to what a government agency is. So while I'm eligible for some grants, we were not eligible to receive CARES money under COVID. We were not eligible to get ARPA funds under the COVID plan, nor the opioid monies that are coming through the state. That's frustrating. That is frustrating for an organization and for us when we are one of the first responders to the COVID pandemic. And so our ability to upstaff an ambulance to meet the demands of the community came out of our general fund, and we are still suffering from that loss. I had to brown out an ambulance company for last budget cycle and again, this coming budget cycle, because we're trying to make up that delta because we are not recognized for those funds. And that is my soapbox, and it will be until I leave here, until the federal government recognizes us as an agency to be able to get some of these funds. I don't think it's intentional at all. I think it is an oversight. We're working with our special districts, agencies in the state and at the national level to work politically with our representatives to be recognized. But that is something that I will continue until the day I leave here. However, what I will share with you is the partnership Nancy and I have and with the city. You may be aware that we subcontract some services from IT, and they are a phenomenal group of folks that do phenomenal work for us. We're very pleased. But I will also share with you that while we did not get any direct money from the opioid or opioid monies, for instance, there is a partnership here that allows us to have a conversation on how best spend the monies coming to the city to meet the demands based on our experiences of involvement of medical calls with the community. The CARES Act and ARPA funds, you know, the opportunity to bring internet to rural communities, that helped us bring internet to our Station Thirty-four. And there's other things that we helped in the partnership, and I appreciate that. So while we didn't get any direct funds, the fact that we have a relationship with the city doesn't go unrecognized, and I truly appreciate that. One of my three sort of mantras besides operational readiness and reducing people's or increasing their ability for risk aversion through fire and life safety is regional partnerships. And you are probably aware that we're working with both the city of Lebanon, the city of Sweet Home in Brownsville and their respective fire agencies to work with a disaster preparedness consulting firm to work through what an EOC startup guide looks like, where we can better support each other and have all the specific documents written out so we can support each other in the event of a disaster. We saw that in the fires of 2020, and that's really what spurred that conversation. And that is going very well. The draft documents have been provided by the consultant. And so I'm excited to keep that relationship moving forward. So the other thing I will share with you is the, one of our challenges is quite frankly, the enterprise fund for the ambulance. And that is our primary population is based with insurance from Medicare and Medicaid. And if you don't know how Medicare and Medicaid works, there are mandated write-offs by the federal government when we do an ambulance transport and service. And what I will share with you, let me go back a little bit. It does not, and I will show the write-offs a little bit later. But what happens is the cost of service isn't covered by the cost of Medicare or Medicaid. And there's mandatory write-offs. It'll become more significant a little bit later. So some of the other challenges we face, and this is no different than you have talked about, I'm sure, in your council meetings, especially with my partner here in the Police Department, Chief Stevenson. And that is inflation, personnel costs, cost of equipment, all the different things. Recruitment and retention of people, we're in the similar boat. When I got here, we were doing recruitments and interviews for a dozen, two dozen people. I'm doing interviews for one. And as you're aware, we have more baby boomers retiring on a daily basis that are, than people are entering the workforce, let alone trained. That will last past 2030. We have the big folks in the room, Clackamas, TBFNR, the big departments, Bend. They're offering signing bonuses. They're offering better pay, better benefit packages. And so you start to become a revolving door. I'm currently down a couple of positions that I've not been able to fill for about a year. And I think it is going to be more challenging for a department our size, a district our size, to continue with recruitment. So this is just population growth versus call volume. Pretty steady growth. As population grows, so does call volume. And the other is staffing level versus response times. What I would offer you is I walked in on a workshop that talked, your Lebanon is one of the fastest growing communities in the state, and you should be proud of that. However, my caution to you is when you build units and at such a fast rate, you can outpace your public safety. And we're not able to keep up with that demand. So what happens, and the potential is, you dilute services to your existing population. And my ask of you is keep that in the back of your mind when you're thinking about fire and emergency services. Because I'm not under the umbrella of the city, so I'm not normally sitting in front of you with this. So I ask that anytime you want to bring me to a council meeting and ask a question, I'd be happy to come. My concern for the community is growth is outpacing our ability to supply services to the masses. So here is our ambulance enterprise. Last year, we built a little over, well, almost eight million dollars in services with the mandatory write-offs from the federal government. We sit just about three million. So the federal government, we lose potential revenue streams of close to five million dollars. The year before that, it was eight million with three million received with a write-off of over five. That is not a sustainable model. If you want to do any homework, I would encourage you to look up Baker City, Oregon. Last year, the city just could not continually sustain their ambulance service because they were funding that supplementing out of the general fund, and they basically just couldn't do it anymore. And my concern of emergency and ambulance services across the nation is going to be where we're going. Not that we don't want to provide the service. My concern is we will be forced out of the ability to provide that service. And that should be a concern for everybody. This is just a chart showing what we build, what we wrote off, and what we were paid. We have a unique situation in the community regarding Lebanon Community Hospital. It is a critical access hospital. It does not have a lot of services, definitive services, stroke care, cardiac, pediatrics, those type of things. And what we find, they put a significant demand on our services when we have to transfer them out of area. And I'm not talking just about out of area to Corvallis or Albany. It's many times we're going to Portland and Eugene and other places like that. During the COVID pandemic, the entire state system was shutting down with bed availability. It was not uncommon to get a request to go to Idaho, to California, to Clamand Falls, or across the border to Washington. And those, if we just, there is, it is, we just can't, we can't provide that level of service. It is an impossible task. So what do we do? What do we do to help move us through this? Well, strategic and master planning, we have all of those. I think our most recent strategic plan is from 2017. Obviously, a good financial plan for the future and good modeling for replacements of equipment. Getting our folks ready to take leadership roles. Most of our organization has under ten years of experience. And somebody is going to be in charge at some point, so we're working very hard in development, anticipating growth in service demands and look at future bonds and levies. But I think the most important takeaway, and this message I did not have for council last year, the message is we're about to step off as an organization to start doing less with less, right? You've heard, you've heard do more with less. But much like, much like our police have had to close the jail because of doing less with less, we're about to step off in this next fiscal year, probably doing less with less. Not sure quite what that looks like yet. We're reducing an ambulance already, as I shared with you. But this is where we're at in the current economic environment that we are. Not to paint a dismal picture, but I want you to know what level of service we're capable of providing the community. So let's end on a little happier note. We appreciate the voters in 2019 passing the sixteen million dollar bond to build a facility. And you probably wonder, Joe, why is it taking so long to build? You got the bond money in 2019, and just as I was unpacking my bags and settling into my office, COVID hit. And when COVID hit, so did, so did the market of lumber and material costs. And quickly, we were ten million dollars over budget. And we just put the brakes on and sort of retooled a little bit and decided, decided to take a break. And we hired a contractor and the architect to do some value engineering. We brought the building back into budget, and off we go. We threaded that needle and got it back within the parameters of what the voters voted for. And with very little compromise, got a beautiful building. And if you've seen it, it is starting to, starting to take shape. I've taken plenty of your time, so I will not show you the video. But if you go to our website, Lebanon Fire District website, there is, there is a time-lapse camera video that's about three minutes long. It'll show you the progress over the last month. That will be updated on a monthly basis, and it's a time lapse. It's pretty cool. Those that you attended are groundbreaking. You'll see a real quick segment of all of us gathering for that, and I appreciate y'all coming for that. That is all I have, and I want to be respectful of your time and your families. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them from you.
And any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Like to thank you for a very comprehensive and well-thought-out presentation. Thank you.
All right. You all have a great evening.
You too. Thank you.
We'll move on to the next, next segment here, the public comments. Citizen may address the council by filling out a card. Prior to speaking, you hand it to the city recorder. Each citizen is provided five minutes. I say again, five minutes. We had some people wanting to go a little farther last time, which, which I try not to cut you off, but I will this time. To provide comment to the council, the council may take up additional two minutes to respond. And the first up is Gamal Nasar.
Good evening, Council.
Mayor, staff, Ms. Brewer. Sorry I wasn't here last, last meeting. I wanted to be part of the discussion regarding the resolution. And I'm okay with what was discussed and decided. I just felt that a request for a resolution and/or proclamation shouldn't go to a private email, but it should be discussed here with everybody hearing it and as Ms. Johnson did for the nine eleven project. I just thought that was the best way to do it for the community. As far as the fire department goes, I want to thank the department and the chief and his team. Being in insurance, we often are on the tragic end of things. And the way that they work with our community, they help our community and treat those that are in, in, you know, just bad shape. It's, you know, we can't ask for a better department, given the size and money and what they have to do. And I agree with our hospital situation. I'm on the hospital board. Not much I can do at the moment, but I'm keeping that in mind as far as increasing our ambulatory and, and help that we can provide our community here because folks do feel the need to go somewhere else. And that's, I think we have a great hospital, but we can do more. Today, I was at Hayden Homes. They had a groundbreaking for the homes over there on, on that part of, that end of town. And they discussed that they're waiting for some more properties after the interceptor's done. So they have fifty more units that they're building, and they're gung ho about that, and I found it interesting. I also found interesting that the homes that they're advertising right now start at three hundred thousand dollars. I don't see a single home. It's three hundred thousand dollars. Those homes look like bigger and more expensive than that. So I found that interesting, but they're all, they look like they're all sold. As far as the market's concerned, in terms of providing incentives to builders, I don't think we need to do that. Builders are waiting, and as a matter of fact, I think the city needs to find ways to increase being able to make a little bit more money on that. But given the fact that our impact fees are, are rated on the size, builders that build in Albany and are waiting for more land available in here in Lebanon are aware of that. And Albany had to change the way they did it because they realized it wasn't fair for builders who were building larger homes to have to pay, or builders that were building smaller homes to have to pay the same fees that the larger homes were being built at. So that's why they were building larger homes, because they were paying the same fees. And they can make greater income and have greater margin on the larger homes. So I don't think that any incentives need to be offered for builders here in our part of town. As far as the homeless situation is considered, I have not heard, and I'm aware that the county is trying to work with us a little bit better in providing some land. But I haven't heard, and Mayor, I did hear what you said last, last week, last month about safety concerns regarding the land across from the sewer plant, sewage plant. I personally think that's a really great option because we're not really talking about a permanent homeless facility. We're talking about a place that the Police Department and can send folks. It's about illegal camping, and I think that's a great site because of where it is. And I know it's not in town, but it's right out, I mean downtown, but it's right outside. It's not that far away. There is transportation for supplies. There's transportation for people. There's transportation for food. I understand it's a little bit of distance away from the food bank. But the truth is, if the food bank wasn't there, does that mean we wouldn't have any homeless folks? They'd still be, they'd still be in the area whether we provided food or not. So I think that, I just, my mind is open to it. I just haven't heard a great reason that that's not a great site. It belongs to the city already. It's kind of away from town. It's not far for folks to go. And I do know that folks that provide services don't have a problem with that location. And I urge the council to figure out a way to bring all these entities together to a table and have a conversation with them. Maybe they have some other ideas that might make, make us feel more comfortable about a location. So I urge that to happen. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it. Have a good evening, everyone. I unfortunately got to go because I got another board. I got to work on strawberry festival stuff. Have a good night.
Thanks, Mark.
You have an excellent internal clock because you're at four minutes, fifty-three seconds. So, so good, good job. Our lights, apparently our batteries are out on our little lights here. So what I'll do is I'll just hold up a finger when you're at, with one minute to go, if that's okay with everybody? Okay. Okay, next person, Tanya Nicholson.
Hi, I'm Tanya Nicholson. I am going to request again that fluoride be removed out of this city water.
Can you move the mic a little closer to you?
Sure.
Thank you.
My understanding is that our city was not, our community was not actually asked initially whether we had fluoride in or not, and it was just a done deal. Then it was revoted on in what was at 2000, 2001. I don't know if there was an actual, and I lived here, actual informed consent happening for fluoride. There's over seven thousand studies on fluoride of the toxicity levels, okay? It is a known fact that it causes bone cancers, endocrine disruptions, Alzheimer's. But I'm not sure if you're aware, the latest study that just came out But I'm not sure if you're aware, the latest study that just came out by Dr. Dean Burk, that's B-U-R-K, he has been over 50 years in cancer research, doctor. Okay? They just finished studying this last year and finalized all the numbers. It just hit the internet 12 days ago. The 10 largest cities in America that have fluoridated water and the 10 largest cities in America that don't. Okay? So we have identicals or opposite city studies happening. And when they went all the way back in the generations or decades and ran their charts and they were exactly identical in deaths, they studied all deaths in those metros. Okay? Then they studied from the moment fluoride was added into. And what happened was the ones that were never fluoridated, their deaths stayed here. The ones that were fluoridated went like this, went straight up. It took one, two, and five years for the different cancers to start showing up. This study just got finalized and it is one of the most irrefutable scientific and biologic studies out there now. And I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but, you know, we've got, how many cities? We have 241 cities in Oregon. There is now only 43 with fluoride in it. And that's if you include Sodaville and Millersburg could do a purchase situation and not have their own water treatment plant. Everybody else has been kicking it out of their systems. Not even Portland Metro has it in anymore because of these 7,000 toxic studies that, you know, are medically affecting people and are being, you know, a treatment, a medical treatment. And I would like to know, was any doctor sitting or medical scientist that was sitting on our city council when they just up and decided to put fluoride in our water and force this treatment on every living person who drinks water? Now, you may live in the country, but you're still coming in to Lebanon and you're drinking pop from the restaurants, coffee from the restaurants, your kids are swimming in the city pool, you're this, here, I brought you a visual. That contains one pea worth. Okay? And there's literally, I put a pea in there for a visual, of fluoride. Now, if you read any of these, and I'm not picking on any of these fluoride brands, but every single one of them says, if you drink or consume more than two peas, you are to call the poison control. These have been on here for years. This didn't just show up. You are to call it poison control and immediately get medical service. So I am asking, we have a whole new, whole new board here, and I'm super excited you all stepped up, but please do not be part of this culpability now that it is absolutely irrefutable. Already 7,000 studies before this latest one were your studies. And go look for yourselves. Don't trust me or go pick up your own toothpaste box. Read for yourself. Get out there, look at these studies. They are terrifying. And if Portland, of all places, has completely removed and gutted it out of their systems, y'all are talking about all this new infrastructure and all this new stuff. Takes two weeks, two weeks for fluoride to start eating out the city pipes, whether they're copper, lead, or whatever. Okay? Please, please get on this and please remove it out of our water for our own health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you need the spelling of the doctor's name, I've got it.
Okay, next up will be Mary Cook.
Okay, thank you very much. My name's Mary Cook, and it's good to be here tonight, Mayor, City Council. This is a little impromptu for me tonight, so I wasn't expecting to talk. But I would like to bring to your attention an issue that I've been following for the last two years that takes place in the surrounding areas of Sio, Almsville, Jefferson, and Staton. You may have heard of the proposed industrialized chicken farms that are coming into the area. And this is a concern of mine because not only does it affect those people, but it also affects us as well. Currently, there are no laws in the state of Oregon that protect our air and water from these industrialized chicken factories. Millions of chickens, and then I mean millions of chickens, means tons of poultry manure. Poultry manure contains ammonia gas, nitrates, and bacteria. Now, these proposed chicken factories are supposed to be going in about feet away from the Santiam River and Thomas Creek. And as you can imagine, with heavy rainfall and flooding, that the farm runoff, it's inevitable that the ammonia gas, nitrates, and bacteria will get into our water. And it's also not so good for the people breathing in the air in the neighborhood either. Causes irritation to the eyes, nose, throat, and also the lungs. But now, the reason I am here today talking with you is that we are having a hearing. I testified in a hearing on Monday, and I am in support of a moratorium that's going in to put a pause on these chicken factories coming into town. Now, we're talking, you know, Foster Farms, Tyson, very large. We're talking 4.6 million, 13 million. These are a lot of chickens. Anyway, this is very real going into the surrounding areas. I understand that as the city limits here in Lebanon, we're probably not in fear of getting a huge industrialized chicken factory here. However, if you can imagine, maybe on the road, you know, 34 or 20 and something going in there, we need to protect our beautiful town. We don't want to smell the manure. We don't want to be around all the flies that it'll attract. We don't want, and this also affects any CAFO, a CAFO, that's coming in, confined animal feeding operations. And I guess my concern is that, you know, the value, the property values will go down and, I don't know, who knows what could happen, a domino effect. But what I'm asking today is, could I get a letter in support of a moratorium going in at the next city council, the next meeting is Monday at the Capitol? And if I could get a letter that, with your letterhead up at the top, in support of keeping these chicken factories out of our area, it would mean a lot. Almsville has already written a letter. I'm talking with all the mayors in the surrounding areas, Corvallis and Albany and so forth. And I just, if I can get your support to put the moratorium, just a pause until we can come up with some laws and some regulations. Because you know why? This is the big deal. When I went to the hearing on last Tuesday, they said that only, that there were 600 inspections that the DEQ, that ODA, and the Water Resources Departments are going to be having to do. Inspections to find out if everybody is doing what they're supposed to be doing as far as groundwater and some other issues that farmers deal with. This is to protect small farmers. So there's only five people, five people in the state of Oregon that are going to be able to do these inspections in a year. Now, does that seem realistic? 600 inspections to check water and soil and air? And there's only five people in this whole entire state of Oregon that are going to be doing this job? And that is what the DEQ told us. And then they said, they used the word "try." Well, we'll try. We'll try. But you know what? Maybe if we can prevent it from happening in the first place, and then we wouldn't have to worry about regulate, we would have those regulations in place. Protect our air and water, please. Thank you. And if I can talk to somebody about a letter, possibly with some letterhead, and I can give you samples of letters if you need help trying to figure out what to say.
We'll talk about this issue and do our due diligence before we issue any type of letter. But the city manager's writing down all these concerns, so we will be talking about this issue.
Ammonia gas, nitrates, bacteria, water.
Thank you so much. Dell Ford. Just so, the last couple people, just so we know, we have our lights going again. So when the greens, you're good. When it gets to yellow, you're getting close to, you're at four minutes. And when it turns red, you reach your five-minute mark, so.
I'll make this as speedy as possible. This is my wife, Suzie. My name is Dell. And I appreciate all your work, your volunteers, and your interest and heart is for the city of Lebanon, which mine is too. I was born in the old library in 1948, before they shut it down. Probably many of you have. And I love Lebanon. I live in Sweet Home right now, but I bought apartments in Lebanon in thinking about retirement 21 years ago. The Grove Street Apartments on Rose and Grove. And it took about 15 years, but we finally got them paid off. We put just about everything back into them. And, you know, last year, my taxes on that were like $6,000. Most of that went to Lebanon, to the fire department, the police, you know, the city and et cetera. So I've been a contributor. I've been a volunteer for Meals on Wheels, and my wife has also done many things for the city of Sweet Home, a library board. And I've never been arrested, never been given a ticket in this area. Anyway, let me move on. I felt wronged when I sold our four apartments. It closed on December, the first day of December of last year, just a couple of months ago. And I felt wronged because the city of Lebanon took the water bills that they couldn't collect from my renters who had separate boxes, meter boxes, and they put liens on my property. And the total of those liens were $2,774, which I had to pay at closing because otherwise I wouldn't have a clear title. So I want to just ask, when in America do we start making people responsible for other people's bills? Now, I thought I could clear this up real easily. I took it to the municipal small claims or the circuit court in Albany. And it was all getting set up to settle with just a judge and the, one of the representatives from the city council. They refused that and wanted to go to a full jury trial. And that would cost me $10,000 on a $2,700 nick that was taken out of my profits when I sold the place. So my question is this, how did I become responsible? It was the renters that had the contracts with the city. They were the ones that were billed and shouldn't it have been the city of Lebanon's responsibility to collect those bills? I've lost rent, thousands of dollars over the last 21 years. I didn't ask the city to pay me back because of that or put a lien on the city's property because that would be ridiculous, absurd. And so how did I, the city make me responsible? They did it by misusing the Oregon lien process. They did it by passing in city council just a few years ago, probably none of you folks, but they did it and made me responsible to pay the renters' water bills when they're the ones that had contracts. I had nothing to do with the water that they ordered. And the city had remedies. They could have shut off the water. They could have put a lock on it. They could have taken them to a small claims court. You know, a number of things they could have done, but they chose to misuse the lien laws by, first of all, there was no connection on that house or on the rental property. Those had been in existence for over 50 years, so they were already built. The lien laws were set up, as most of you know, to recoup loss from both labor and from the suppliers, you know, for the two-by-fours and everything else. Those were already built. And they not only put it on the property that had nothing to do, they also charged me, who had nothing to do with ordering the water. And so I would like to be reimbursed for the $2,774, and I would like the policy to be reversed because it is extortion.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you all for being here and caring about our lovely Lebanon. Thank you all.
Yeah.
Yes, dear. I think, maybe I need to lean closer.
There you go.
I passed by a building yesterday and it folded me over. I am the grandmother of several grandchildren out here, and one of my grandsons, my only I'm not sure if he shot his own self in the head or someone shot him in the head. This was October of 2021. As I was driving through Lebanon yesterday, I saw a building out my rearview mirror. I hadn't seen it. And it's got the initials of my only grandson with gang tagging underneath of it. And it's on a pot shop, Karen Lebanon. I was freaking, please, I was folded over hard. I know it's not legal for me to go over there and cover the gang tagging and that on that building. It's somebody's business, and I am a business owner in this town. Is there a legal way? I did park my truck and go into the business and ask them if they had planned to paint their building anytime soon. They told me they had, but they're not sure when. Is there something we can do to get the gang tagging off of that pot shop? I don't want my grandson moralized like this. That's all I've got.
Can you tell us, what is the address, the building, the name of the?
It was 4-1's 1111. It's on the Santiam, right by the railroad tracks as you're coming back through town, the big orange, the orange building there. That's my only grandson in life. On the side of that building.
We'll see what we can do about it.
I would thank you so much.
We're sorry.
Forgive me, please.
The last one, Sarah McDowney. I hope I said that correctly. I hope I said that correctly. Okay.
Hi, I'm Sarah Mackel Downey. I've been a community member and a business owner here in downtown for quite a while. I've done stuff with the skate park and worked with kids, um, that were at risk and kinda... I come from a, uh, a really good family, and so kind of exposing myself to kids, um, that are that high of need was a lot. And so over the years, we did work with kids, and through COVID, we, um, had taken a break because we just, we, we just, we took a break. And when I had seen the homeless encampments coming back to being an option for town, I was, I was upset, and I have to, um, find a good purpose, um, to come and speak, um, maybe on behalf of the homeless kids in this town that maybe some resources are directed more towards them opposed to, uh, um, some older individuals. I, I had kind of done some investigation this last week, so I've never really, um, researched this field or kind of found out some information, but when I had, what I had researched, there was like two organizations that served youth in Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln County. And the rest of the services were going to, um, mental health, drug addiction, homelessness, and housing resources, and I feel like, uh, we should maybe focus some of our attention on our children in this community, and an encampment for me is not a social service or a human resource. I think it's a bottom of a barrel. And to have these kids being exposed, and placed with, in encampments with, at-risk adults, I think is a very bad combination. And I feel like I need to speak on behalf of these kids around here, that we get some resources to them. I have reached out to, um, Jackson Youth Center, which houses homeless youth, to see if we can get some resources over here for them. Um, and connections in the community for these kids. Um, and I'm, I'm trying to do my part, you know, because I don't, I don't want to just come and complain about it and be mad about it. And I don't want to be mad at another person's homeless situation. But I, I really feel the need to say that we should not subject these young kids to these, um, situations that these adults are in. If anybody has gone over to some of these encampments over in Corvallis in Albany, you, um, there's a lot of drug use. And I, I think we shouldn't have our at-risk youth being mixed up in these situations, and I think we need some resources for our community and our schools and not let these kids fall, uh, by the wayside, because this is, uh, this is the population that we're supposed to serve with these services that are available. So.
Any questions?
I, I actually wonder, like, what type of services are you, um, advocating for, for the, for the youth?
Well, I was looking at these, I was looking at the inter-community health network, and they do like pilot programs, and what I've found is I, my idea really doesn't fit, right? What I want to do to serve the kids, I would like a place where these kids got three meals a day. They had a place for respite, the family had respite to get on their feet. They got taken to school if they didn't do good in school. And they had a bad day, they had a place, um, a home with some resources to go back to, um, with some providers. And not just be another problem for the school, to be another dropout, because they gotta, uh, I think they have a problem here with that, and I think that we could support our, um, community school a little bit more and help these kids.
Are you advocating removing the children from their families?
No. I am advocating for those kids not to be in that situation. I, I don't want to separate kids from their parents. But as a parent and being in a situation like some of these parents are, a respite, um, care would be good, family services would be good. And just so the parents can get on their break, it's not like they would have no access to their kids, like, why can't we just? I'm not sure, I'm not, you, I'm not sure. The answer for that, I'm not advocating for the kids to be separated from their parents, but I do think that the kids shouldn't be brought, um, into the situations that these parents are being put in.
Is there any other questions?
I appreciate your position, I don't think encampments are a good thing for anybody who's homeless. I think services to those people, no matter what their age, is more important than warehousing them or giving them a place to be enabled, just my opinion.
Well, thank you for your comments. Just for everybody that, that came up and spoke today, we do take these notes down, we, we examine them, and we, we look into them. So it's not that we just sit here and listen and, and send you out the door, we actually do look into these things, so. Move on, go ahead.
We appreciate you being here, we need your input.
Yes. Uh, move on to the regular session. First item is the Library Collection Development Policy Amendment. Is the library director here? Oh, there she is. I was looking around for her. Can't hear you.
Uh, you may be muted, Kendra.
I hit unmute, it didn't work for some reason. Uh, good evening, everyone, I know it's been a long night for you already, so I will try to make this quick. The Library Advisory Committee routinely reassesses existing policies. We started looking at this particular policy, the collection development and request for reconsideration of materials. In August of 2022, we compared our policy, um, against several other library policies throughout the country, big libraries, small libraries, north, south, east, west. We cherry picked some features of all of those policies that we liked and thought would enhance our own. So the amended policy that you all have, I hope before you, encompasses all of those changes. The most significant would be, um, that when there is an official request for reconsideration of materials, the decision will be made by the entire advisory committee instead of just the library director. I, I hope that makes the process a little less arbitrary. Um, we also updated some policy language, and then we added some features that we hope, um, will prohibit, um, excessive malicious frivolous challenges. Something that we heretofore have not had to deal with, but many libraries have, and we'd like to be proactive rather than reactive. So, um, it's our hope that you all agree with the changes the advisory committee has voted and approved. Anyone have any questions?
I had one.
Okay.
Did I under, did I understand correctly, the reconsideration, each household gets one, ever?
No, um, the language says...
That's why I read, that's what I read.
No, it's one, um, one per household every three years.
Okay.
And again, that's, that's something that we saw in other policies, and, and I can only imagine that some libraries were forced to do that, because there were certain households that were just challenging things right and left, and the challenge process is, um, it's, it takes a lot of time, it's very time-consuming. So I'm sure that's why that was added, and we thought it was a good idea.
Has that been much of a problem here?
Not here, not yet, not yet. Again, we're trying to be proactive rather than reactive.
Any other questions?
No, not for me.
Is there a motion?
Let's move, we accept the policy amendment. The library policy amendment.
My second.
Uh, motion was made by Councilor District and seconded by Councilor Workman. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, next, uh, on the regular session is the discussion regarding designated, uh, designation of sleeping area. And that will be by our city manager, Nancy Brewer.
Thank you. Trying to get this close enough so that I'm heard. Okay, let's try that. So at the last meeting, we started having discussions about, uh, where we might designate a place where people who do not have any place else to sleep can sleep overnight. Uh, we are working through ordinance revisions that I, uh, expect will be on the April, uh, agenda that will make it clear that people can sleep in parks during the day and setting those hours, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. But we do close the parks at night, and they're closed to everybody. And, and so that is not a place where someone can, uh, have protection from the elements in the evening. Uh, and we had talked about several sites. We are working under the guidance of, uh, Ninth Circuit Court decisions, most notably Boise and Grants Pass. We've talked about those in work sessions, uh, in addition to state law, most notably House Bill 3115 from 2021, uh, that identified, um, that in cities, beginning July 1st of 2023, all public property is to be made available for people to sleep unless you have reasonable objective standards to exclude something. Uh, as we looked through, uh, with the ad hoc task force, what we had in terms of, of city-owned property, we did start applying some standards to that, so for example, we have, in, in the city limits of Lebanon, we have, uh, property that is owned by federal, state, school district, special district. Um, city, county, all have property that they own inside the city limits. We ruled out everything that's not city-owned, because we don't really have access or the ability to say, go sleep on this piece of federal land, which I will say is also pretty much abutting the railroad tracks, not a good place. But we also can't say, go sleep on a piece of state land, we don't own it and don't control it and can't, can't identify that. So we, uh, first looked at city-owned parcels. We ruled out, um, parcels that are riparian areas, so creekside areas, we have some parcels, um, that have been dedicated to the city because they are wetlands and can't be developed on. Those, uh, having people sleep in those areas, uh, you're going to end up with them being wet, which is not what you want. Uh, it's not a safe place to sleep, and you're going to end up causing damage to natural areas, which you also don't want to have. Um, we ruled out locations that have significant infrastructure, so the water and wastewater plants, pump stations, lift stations, those kinds of things. Uh, that infrastructure has to be accessible, there is a fair amount of danger, and frankly, it's kind of noisy if you've got pumps running. Uh, they are not quiet pumps. Uh, we did, uh, look at property that would be in residential neighborhoods, we ruled that out. If you don't really think about it, the sidewalks everywhere, including in front of people's homes, are public property, and generally, it's the sidewalk to this, to the street, and the street, of course. So the parking strip or vanity strip that's between the sidewalk and the curb is public property. But we also have liability for accidents on that property assigned to the homeowner or the abutting property owner. And we didn't feel like we can say, you need to let people sleep on the public property, abutting your property, and then have potential liability issues for those, those, uh, property owners. So we really, again, we're looking at parcels that were, uh, more under city staff control. We recognize that places like sidewalks need to be ADA accessible. Uh, if you follow Portland, Salem, uh, news, they've had issues with people camping on sidewalks where those sidewalks become untraversable, the entire sidewalk is taken. And someone who's in a wheelchair with a stroller, with a walker, cannot get where they want to go. And we're trying not to impinge on people's ability to maneuver around the community. Again, parks are not, uh, suitable for overnight use. And, and in addition to just that they close, we do have, uh, gearing up in the next several weeks, we start having, uh, sports events, we start having kids softball, baseball, uh, activities. And, and again, we're gonna, uh, try to avoid conflicts between people who want to sleep someplace and, and activities that are going on park reservations. And then finally, we, and I'm going to say, this is not an all-inclusive list, these are some highlights, we need to be sure that the site can be serviced by a porta potty, a handwashing station, garbage collection bins kind of thing, and, and that they can be, you know, picked up and collected and serviced. Um, the ad hoc committee looked at, uh, maps of city property, they really, um, looked at four sites, the old gas station, uh, Ralston Park, the gas station, the public works facility in front of, uh, on Oak Street, the city hall block on Maple, uh, and then a parking lot that's behind city hall that abuts Park Street. The ad hoc committee ruled that out, didn't really settle on one of the other three as a preferred site. At the, uh, uh, and I, and I included in the, in the staff report, there were a couple of other sites that we talked at, at length. Uh, one of them is the vacant lot next to the Justice Center. As staff, we had kind of ruled that out for consideration, because it's, uh, both abutting residential neighborhoods and then the skate park access, uh, as, as probably not being particularly suitable. And then the site that was referred to earlier today, that's across the street from the wastewater treatment plant. Not abutting residential property, but the trail, uh, area that's there is, uh, heavily used by community members, and we don't know how that interaction would work. And then, uh, again, accessibility to that site, there's not, um, there's not a direct si, a direct sidewalk, you can get there on trails, but you can't just easily walk down Williams and Tennessee to get to that site, so accessibility is a bit more of a challenge. At the work session, the council was kind of looking and seemed to be leaning between the public work site and the city hall site, back and forth. I think, uh, no one was, uh, arguing for the Ralston Park site. And we did discuss the potential for a county-owned site at Highway 20 in Dewey, we have been in conversations with the county. We don't own or control that site, we don't have any kind of agreement, but we are having conversations with them about that as a possible site. And so really asking you to have further discussion and provide direction. I, it would be helpful, I think, for staff if we could get the list narrowed to maybe two possible sites to look at for, what would be cost to prepare the sites, manage and maintain them over time. Come back to you at the April meeting, perhaps have a public hearing with those two sites identified, and be able to get community comment on, on preferred sites, so that we can, uh, continue moving through this process and get something identified before July 1st. So I'm going to stop talking and see if we can answer questions.
Can you, uh, talk about the Lynn County site just a little bit? I know there's some, if that, if that site was considered, there are some restrictions in the future.
There are, and I, and I had in the staff report, we had expected, um, uh, the, the county-owned parcel is, um, the county owns it frankly, because we are supposed to be realigning Walker and Dewey to make that a straight intersection instead of the kind of off-site, uh, that it is currently, where we do have accidents there, uh, with vehicle turning movements particularly. We had, uh, been in conversations with ODOT, it would be an ODOT city-county project to do that realignment. Uh, we thought that was going to happen in the next one to two years. Packet went out, and, uh, and our city engineer, Ron Whitlatch, got contact from ODOT that said... that said, this project did not make it into the funding for the current cycle. And so it's more likely a 28, 29 or later project at this point. So it may make the site a little bit more viable on a slightly longer term in, in terms of not needing to dig it up to put a road there yet. Um, but that is up in the air still. Um, uh, we're still having conversations with ODOT about that and trying to figure out where it is on their priority list.
If I could add just a little bit, I've had some discussions with both the roadmaster over in, uh, Lynn County and, uh, the, uh, county, uh, equivalent to Ms. Brewer, Darren Lane. Um, and I think that, um, it's, they're very amenable to a request from the city for, uh, transfer of that property. Um, if, if, I mean, they're, they would be fine with it either way, whether we're going to use it for this project or not. But specifically, um, if, uh, if that's a viable option, I think the first step is for the city to request that they, uh, transfer the property, uh, to the city. And I think that, that would be, uh, received well at the county, although there's never any guarantees.
Uh, actually, my opinion, out of all the different sites that, that we've identified, um, I've come to a conclusion that the Lynn County, if, if we were able to transfer that property over would might, might be our best option for right now. Um, uh, the, the other options, I, I, the Lynn County site is far enough off the road. Um, the improvements would be, uh, there wouldn't be a lot of improvements to the property. We'd, of course, we'd, we'd have, we'd have to put the basic services in, maybe a, a fence for privacy and keep the, the concrete blocks in front for safety. The, uh, other spots I, I'm opposed to, but the Lynn County site, it's, I'm starting to warm up to that, that site. So I would be, uh, willing to say that that's one site that I'm interested in. Um, but I would love to hear from the council.
I agree with that. I got concerns about the maple in front of the, the city hall. That just doesn't seem big enough or viable to, to put people there. I could be wrong. I know that Public Works wasn't real unpopular to people. That would be my second choice personally, but after looking at the, the new spot we got, that would be my choice too.
I agree that, I, I mean, I don't know what kind of site improvements have to be done out there. Possibly, I mean, that's, that'll come out, I assume, in, in the talks with the county. But, um, I like the idea of it being there, like it to have a fence around it. And I would prefer, you know, as we talk about this, to consider putting a gate that we can open and close between those certain hours from like 7:00 p.m. And somebody opens it, I don't know who, and then at 8:00, you know, it's like in the morning, okay, it's time to move on. And we lock that until the time later. But I mean, that, that way it keeps its intention of what, what we're talking about here, which is a sleeping site. Um, and it prevents people from sleeping in, on our sidewalks in, say downtown. So I think it gives the tools the chief and, um, our police officers are going to need. Um, of all, none of the, quite honestly, none of the sites are great, but, um, this is the best one that I have heard of since we've talked about it, so.
Uh, I, I don't think it would take much to make that site pretty inviting for someone to, uh, want to set up their tent or, or whatever. Um, uh, the, uh, I think the biggest improvements would be, of, of course, the, the fencing, um, leveling out the ground and make sure the drainage is good. And then placing, um, the city manager and I talked about this, placing, uh, like big bark chips or something that's softer for someone to, to be able to, to sleep on. Um, uh, there, it's centrally located by, you know, all the businesses that, that, that people use. Um, so, uh, I think we should explore that, that option with the county. Um, with the, with the caveat that, that it possibly could go away. So I don't think this, this, if this was the solution, it's going to just fix everything. Um, it could be disappearing in two years, um, but that would give us two years to find a, a, a better spot, so.
And to make the, and to make the point, uh, if the realignment does go through, there's still a resulting property that's available there. It just wouldn't, it would be realigned, right? There'd be, um, and there's also, there is a property in the middle of the two county properties that would eventually need to be dealt with in order to make the realignment, which is something that we're going to have to deal with anyways. Um, but in, in other words, there's, there's always going to be some extra property there. How we use that or, or whatever can be determined at that time. But it's going to be a realignment, so there's going to be, you know, another lot or lots that are created as a result of that. And again, we're probably looking at 2028 or later.
I, I also would say, uh, you know, as, as a, as a temporary site, you know, the hope might be that within the next couple of years, we would end up with a shelter that would be much more suitable. I think we all recognize that having a place where you can sleep overnight is not moving people out of homelessness. It's not helping get, uh, get you into, uh, case management wraparound type services that I think would be most helpful. Um, but it does meet the letter of the law and the, the, the legal requirements that we have to, to have here. So it's, um, it, it's, it's not, it's not going to solve a problem necessarily is, I think, the, the challenge that we're up against. But maybe we can, in the, in an intervening time period, we would be able to get some community group who would step up and say they could take on and, and run a shelter and we would be able to move forward with something more suitable.
And the laws are changing daily.
Uh, yeah, legislative sessions, uh, are delightful.
So a point of clarification, as whoever has these talks with county, are we waiting for the okay from them before we engage kind of the neighbors in that area or?
So, uh, uh, Trey has been having a lot of conversations. I did get an email late yesterday from Darren Lane saying, could I give him something, a, a formal request in writing that he can take to the county commissioners to discuss donating the property? Uh, I'm hoping to do that, if not tomorrow and Friday, um, and get that letter off to him. And I think we would need to be able to say, we had some assurance we were going to acquire the property before we then discussed it or put out information, uh, probably using one of Kelly's tools in terms of identifying neighborhoods to be notified, uh, of a, it's not a land use decision, but it is kind of a land use action, um, so to speak, so that we would be able to identify who, who we could have talk about that.
How big a piece of property is this?
Looks like about a quarter acre, probably.
Yeah, it's.
If you, if you recognize it, it's got all the barricades around it right now.
Used bookstore on the side.
The old Hosking supply lot.
Yeah, exactly.
And we are, and I, and I would say that the county's been, uh, very receptive, um, and, uh, open to discussions. And also, I mean, they have an interest in the issue overall. I mean, obviously, and, um, we're requesting some partnership with them as far as, uh, uh, keeping the, the, uh, some of the barriers there, all of the barriers, because I think that's for safety pur- purposes, that's nice with all the traffic that's on Main Street. Um, and, and we're also discussing again that, you know, this all has to go through the county commissioners and that, that kind of stuff. But we're also discussing, um, um, some partnership or, or involvement by them of, of leveling, grading, that kind of stuff, that, um, they're receptive to again, until we get the property, until we make the request, nothing, nothing set in stone. But I would say that they're, they're working with us in, in, in good partnership and, and trying to at least address the issue with, you know, as best we can with their help, so.
And I, and I wanted to bring this, this question up, just if there's people out there watching. The county would just deed this property over. We would not be giving, giving any consideration to them for the property.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the county had, I mean, the, the property has value, obviously, but it, it, it's, it's the long-term pers- purpose here is for a municipal, you know, because eventually not only will it, you know, it would, it, we have the, uh, intersection fixed, but we would also take jurisdiction of the, of the road. And, um, and in long ways down the road, when all of that is annexed, because it's the expense of all the utilities and all that. But, um, it, you know, eventually it would be, uh, and, and a piece like this, I mean, we're doing the same thing with a piece of county property that it's kind of just an island. It's a road here in town and there's no real reason for it to be in county ownership. So we've made a request for that property just to be deeded over, uh, same ki- kind of the same situation. Um, you know, it was foreclosed on them, it does have value. They've put some, you know, they've put some, uh, value into it. Um, but, uh, and again, there, you know, this, there's more down the road as we talk about a partnership with some involvement of the county with respect to the road realignment too. And those discussions will continue.
Is there any other questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, I, I think, um, regardless of where we, which spot we designate, there will be people that are unhappy. But I think it's important to distinguish that, like, for the public, for those who are watching and, and the public is following this story, it's, it's very important to distinguish that we're not creating a homeless camp. We are, we are simply saying, this is a spot where if the police have to force somebody out of the park at night, this is a spot where they can go sleep. And I think that, that location there in Lynn County is our best option. As far as, as far as the least impact to the, to the least.
Speaks to the quality of our options that that's our, our best one at this time.
I agree. Any other comments, questions?
Nancy, do you have what you need from us?
I, I'm actually taking it that we, we aren't really deciding between two sites. It's come back with what it would take to make this site work, uh, assuming that in the next month we can, uh, get to agreement with Lynn County on the transfer of the property and, and how we would, uh, how we would make that work for the community.
Well, looking it up, July 1st is 115 days away and, uh, we can always utilize that second meeting in June if we had to.
Yes, we could, but we're hoping to be done before then.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm, I'm setting the timeframe up here.
I think your characterization is pretty accurate there, Nancy, it sounds like.
I agree.
Okay, thank you, we'll work on that.
Okay, we'll move on to the third item, uh, city manager's report. Nancy?
Thank you. I just have a few things to highlight for you, uh, just to let you know, the chamber was going to come and make their annual presentation tonight too. But because someone drove into their building, apparently that's made it difficult for them to, uh, craft their annual report because they can't get access to any of their papers or their computers or anything else. So, uh, hope Rebecca's hoping she can be here next month and, and share that information. Uh, we did get notification today that we were awarded Tree City USA again for 2022. This is a program that, uh, we, uh, participate in, uh, as, as a lot of cities across the United States do in terms of planting trees and maintaining trees in our urban forest, uh, providing, you know, shade and oxygen and all kinds of good things for the community. So it's nice to see that. Uh, and finally, I'll let you know that, um, we are closing this week on the Albany property that we're acquiring that abuts River Park on the north edge. It's a little more than five acres. Um, but, uh, I signed closing documents today and we wire money tomorrow, so we ought to be, uh, able to, to work through that. BLT has been chomping at the bit to start working on grants for, uh, a trail to put through that property. So that, uh, comes together very nicely, so. That's all I have for tonight. Oh, I guess I would ask if you want to come back and discuss the chicken farm moratorium and the request for a letter, if there's anything you want to direct me on that. It's, I, I will tell you, it's not a bill I'm following, um, and it's not one that I would ordinarily weigh in on. We have some other things that we are, uh, as staff, following a lot of, um, a lot of land use bills this, uh, term associated with housing production, um, and, uh, some bills associated with things like creating an urban renewal type funding source for infrastructure to make housing more affordable. It's got some tax and revenue implications on it. Um, uh, so we're following a lot of bills along those lines, but, uh, I have not been following this one at all.
I can give a little, I can give a little bit of background because, uh, they have requested the city of Syo, and I also represent the city of Syo, and we've done some research. And, and obviously there's, uh, a few of these proposed farms, and I think some that are even approved and have some lawsuits going in Lynn County. Um, you know, it, it, it's a significant issue for a lot of people, obviously, uh, farmers and, and different things. It's not just related to chicken, it's mega farms overall. Um, it is a substantial, uh, issue. And a lot of the argument is just that we haven't studied enough and we're opening up these areas to these farms. What's weight, study, water, all this kind of stuff. And that's the argument. I'm not, I'm not making an argument one way or the other. The city of Syo decided that what they wanted was, there was a fear at the time that Syo looked at it, that it was just going to get bogged in committee. It was never going to come out of committee, um, and not really have a hearing. They have, they have made, they've had one hearing already and they're planning on at least having one more hearing, maybe a third hearing. And then it would have to come out of committee by, I think, uh, the sixth, 26, 16, something. Um, and so, you know, there's the, obviously this council, what, you know, if somebody wanted to bring it forward as, hey, we want to, we want the city to take a position and you debate and talk about the issue, we could do that. Um, or anybody that wants to could also, you know, look at the issue and as an individual, right, their own state senators or representatives on their opinion on it as not representing the position of the city. I would say that there's none right now that are really very, you know, close, but it doesn't, doesn't mean that there couldn't be a same type of a farm, you know, right outside the city limits in the future. Um, so it is a significant issue to a lot of people, um, especially farmers and, and small farmers in the area. Um, that being said, you know, they're having the hearings. There's, I think, 400 people that testified either in writing or in person or by Zoom or whatever at the first hearing. So it's, uh, it's a significant issue. Um, but, you know, it's kind of just up to the council whether the, you know, the city of Lebanon wants to address it or take a position or debate it or anything.
Seems like timeliness, it's kind of a short window to, seems like she wanted us to give her a letter today, which, good, bad, or indifferent, the issue, I don't think we know enough about it to make that statement right now.
Yeah, I, I will, I'll have to dig into it if you and even see what it's about. I, I've heard her talk about it before, um, but yeah, I don't know enough to even give an opinion right now on it, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to items from council. Is there any concerns, comments?
I just, I think probably for the record, I, I got an email from, uh, Ross Penner, who's a, in my ward at, on Dodge Street, complaining about, uh, rats coming from a rental property, which the rental property doesn't have anything to do with it. It's just from another property. Uh, Nancy's been kind enough to contact code enforcement for us and I'll follow up with them to see. I know he's real busy and that's probably not a top priority, but I just kind of want it in the record that I hear these people and I will follow up with them and see how that goes.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I, uh, the, the lady who brought the information about the, uh, fluoride in the water. Um, the, the statement she made, you know, just taking them at face value, it is, it causes a little twinge of concern. I also haven't done any research on this, so I, I think I'm going to, I'm going to look into it a little more just to dig a little deeper and see, you know, if that's, if those are valid studies and if that, that information is worth bringing up at a later date.
I think that's fair.
I would encourage you to talk to Ross.
Okay.
Also feel bad for the lady with the, on the pot chop. I don't know what we can do for that. I'd go, I'd go scrub the stuff off for her. That's a terrible thing Bird would have to face, I feel bad for her.
I, I think we can probably, uh, uh, have someone contact the property owner and ask them to attend to the graffiti in a timely fashion. We'd do that. Uh, Frank's already taken care of it. He bought the can of paint and, uh.
I was just going to say, if they can't paint it themselves, then I'll go take care of it and paint it myself, so. Thank you.
I take it that's it? So any, uh, comments from, uh, the public or press?
Um, the law that now applies to any city in the United States is a federal law, just so to make your life easier for research. It's called the Deleneum Amendment. And I gotta read it because I'm not, no scholar, okay? It says, "Anything found to induce cancer in people or animals cannot be legally put into foods or drink." What I am finding with all the 7,000, and I have not read all 7,000, I'm poring through many of them. The common link I'm seeing from all these studies, um, whether it's bone or blood or brain, all these things, it sounds like people are getting, um, overdosed. Cause health-wise, one pee amount is allowed and you should be okay. I don't believe that they considered the drinking of multiple glasses of water, the showering, the doing the laundry, to washing your floors, to, you know, bathing your children, to going swimming, to whatever else in the compounding. It only takes, many of them are mentioning, it only takes 26 seconds for anything to be absorbed into the body. And so the longer your child's sitting in the bathtub or the swimming pool, or you're showering, whatever you're doing, you are then getting multiple dosed many, 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 many times. I think that's where the trouble is coming through, just by reading a common thread. And yes, I have to look up sometimes every four words because it's like, what the heck? But just as a general basis, this is what I'm seeing. So just give you a, a bit of stuff, you know? And it's very helpful if you don't use censored search engines.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Thank you. And I intend to reach out to some of our local dentists to see if they would like to weigh on, in on this. I know, uh, Dr. Adam Kirkpatrick has in the past and, and has said, you know, it'd be great for his business if we removed it, but, um, I don't know that that's the intention, the intent that we would like. So just reaching out to local dentists and seeing if they would.
like, so just reaching out to local dentists and seeing if they would like to provide comment on something like that. Yes, I believe so.
I mean, we've addressed this on a, there was a referendum, I think it was passed, well, I think it was passed by a petition or a referendum or something years and years and years ago. There has been attempts, in fact, in 2022, I think we had a ballot title that was submitted to get rid of fluoride. I don't think they got the vote or signatures.
They actually have two years to gather signatures, and when I talked with them last summer, they were supposed to bring it back in December for the May, and they missed the deadline. I never heard from them, so I don't know what's happening with it.
Yeah, and I think the issue is, is that I don't think, I'm not sure that the council necessarily could, maybe they could or should, but it was passed by the people, so I think what the councils in the past have said, hey, if we have another referendum and they want to get rid of it, that's, you know, we'll follow that, and I don't know that the city itself has a strong feeling one way or the other. I'd have to talk to Ron, I guess, or Jason, who's in charge of that now?
I think, so Jason is in charge of the plants, and I think people have strong opinions or no opinions on either side, and I believe that what I have seen in the past is for everything you find on the internet that says it's bad, there's something that says it's good and that it doesn't cause cancer, so.
Testaments of the internet.
As with many things on the internet, you do want to test, and I would suggest if you're going to research it, perhaps you ought to be doing like peer-reviewed medical journals as a better choice than my opinion on internet that I'm hoping I get viral with my TikTok dance or something. I'm just saying that there's a lot of stuff out there.
I guess I won't make that video tonight.
I'm trying to visualize.
Don't TikTok about that.
At least I didn't say French.
This is like the fourth time this has been brought up in about 10 years now. It goes way back, the fluoride issue.
Longer before that, I was a professor.
Well, that's 10 years ago.
Any other comments from the council? All righty, next council meeting will be on March 22, 2023, at 12 o'clock PM.